Okay, welcome. Welcome to the Brevard City Council Regular Meeting. I want to welcome everybody that has come here in person to attend our meeting, and also everybody that is watching it on the live broadcast. As we begin this evening, I want to introduce everybody that is sitting up here. To my far left is our city attorney, Mac McKellar. Next to him is councilman Maurice Jones. Next is councilwoman Geraldine Dinkins. Then we have councilman Mac Morrow, myself, Mayor Maureen Kopeloff. And today, we have a new face sitting to my left. We have Alex Shepard, who's filling in for our city clerk Denise Hodston. Alex is the Assistant to the City Manager/Deputy City Clerk. Did I get that right, Alex?
Yes, ma'am.
And Denise has trained him up on what to do when the mayor messes up on the agenda or something, so he's fully ready. Now, we've got our mayor pro tem and council member Gary Daniel, council member Aaron Baker, and city manager Wilson Hooper. Okay, with that, I want to welcome Pastor Brian Land from Grace Brevard Church, who is going to give our invocation tonight. Pastor Brian?
Thank you. I am Brian Land, and Grace Brevard is one of the newest churches in town. We're six years old. We're right next to where George Enz is doing his project behind First Baptist. So, we're in the American Legion Building, and we rented from Brevard Little Theater for the first several years, but now we've taken over their lease. And so, we're six years old, and we formed because about a dozen people just wanted to worship together and grow in our faith together, but fundamentally, we want to serve the town. That is part of our fundamental values, is how can we love and serve this town? And so, that's why we function, that we don't have a lot of programs. We like to send our people out, and they work with the Boys and Girls Club, and Sharing House, and Haven, and Cove Shelter, and Safe, and all over town, that we would rather people get out of our building and serve the town rather than come and huddle together. And so, that's kind of how we function. And so, I would love to pray for you all and for what's going to happen tonight, that the Lord would bless it. Lord, thank you so much. First, thank you for what unbelievably incredible place that you have made here, a little slice of heaven in these mountains. Thank you, Lord, that you have blessed this place with incredible beauty and with incredible people and with incredible leaders that are sacrificing and serving. And, Lord, oftentimes, we'll have to field compliments and complaints, and we pray, Lord, that you would equip them, equip them to handle the compliments and complaints with wisdom and grace, Lord, as it is a difficult position that they hold. Lord, we pray for your blessings upon these people. Pray for blessings, Lord, as they are sacrificing their time, their talent, they're sacrificing their wisdom, and even time away from the other parts of their lives. We pray for a blessing upon them as they sacrifice. And, Lord, as they make decisions that will impact this whole area, Lord, that they would be equipped with your wisdom. Lord, to love and serve the marginalized, the broken, the needy, to love the regular average citizen, love the ones who are on the inside and on the outside. Lord, equip them. Lord, equip also us in this area, in this town, to pray for and love them as well. Lord, that you would unify us as a people, that we would, even in our differences, give respect to one another. So, Lord, thanks for the night. Thanks for what you're going to do, and we trust that you have called each of these people. And, Lord, they would act with love and with wisdom and with strength. And we pray all of these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, pastor. If everyone would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, honor, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Deputy Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Madam Mayor, you have a quorum. All members are present.
Thank you. Council, you got the draft agenda sent to you. Are there any proposed amendments or changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Mayor? I would like to pull K1 from the consent agenda, just for a brief review.
Okay. We would put that under New Business. Any other changes to the agenda? Do I have a motion to approve with the one modification?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda's approved. The minutes of the October 2nd, 2023, regular meeting were sent out. Are there any corrections or modifications to those minutes? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Those minutes are approved. The October 16th, 2023, regular meeting minutes were sent out. Are there any modifications or changes to those? Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those are approved. At this point, we have public comments. Oh, I think this might be a first. Okay. We have nobody who has signed up for public comments. So, I will open public comments, and I will close public comments, and we will move on. Next is our public hearing. A public hearing, the public is asked to adhere to the following guidelines for the public hearing. Register with the city clerk by printing your name, address, and phone number on the sign-in sheet, which is this. When it is your turn, step to the podium in front of city council. State your name and address clearly. Be concise, avoid repetition, and limit your comments to five minutes or less. Direct comments to the full council, not to an individual council member or to staff. This is a time to provide your comments, but not to ask questions. A public hearing is not an appropriate venue for a question-and-answer session. Designate a spokesperson for large groups, and each person may speak once for a specific public hearing. Okay. And we have one person that has signed up, and that is Mr. Alan Mercado.
Madam Mayor? Can I talk about the public hearing item first?
Oh, sorry. Alex, see, you were supposed to, like, you know, kick me or something, you know, and say, "We didn't have the briefing." You're right, we have our public hearing, and Emily Brewer, our senior planner, is going to give us the proposed text amendments to the City of Brevard Code of Ordinances, Chapter 34, Flood Plane Development Revisions. Thank you, Emily.
Of course, of course. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, today, the public hearing is about Chapter 34, the Flood Damage Prevention Chapter of the City's Code of Ordinances. The purpose of this chapter is to promote public health, safety, and general welfare, and to minimize public and private losses due to flood conditions within flood-prone areas by enforcing the provisions that are designed to accomplish those goals. The planning director, or his designee, is the flood plane manager for the city and is responsible for enforcing these provisions and for maintaining the city's participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, NFIP. But the City of Brevard has higher standards that exceed the minimum requirements of the NFIP. The Community Rating System, or CRS, is a voluntary program that incentivizes communities to have higher standards of flood plane development regulations in order to reduce insurance premiums for those residents. The city is classified as a Level 8 community with the CRS program, where citizens who need flood insurance are eligible to purchase this insurance at a 10% discount on their premium. So, there's a couple different goals for this text amendment, and I'll walk through those briefly. The first goal of this amendment is really to better align our ordinance with the model ordinance that was provided by North Carolina Emergency Management. NCEM retains a model ordinance that meets the standards for the NFIP program as it relates to North Carolina's general statutes. So, the majority of the changes that are presented tonight are really just to align our ordinance with those updated requirements. These include things like adding new definitions or amending them, updating the form reference numbers, clarifying some of the things that have tweaked in recent years with the NFIP program. The second goal is to improve the usability of this very, very technical chapter. These are things like providing detailed requirements for notices of violations so that we're able to have a work plan, essentially a list of exactly what needs to happen as staff, consolidating some of the enforcement and variance procedures to make it a little more digestible, and removing standards for special flood areas that are not within our jurisdiction anyways, so really trying to make it as clear and concise as possible. The third goal of this is to refine and consolidate the enforcement, appeal, and variance procedures. These are currently in our UDO and not in our Code of Ordinances. So, what it is right now is that the flood plane regulations refer to the UDO and say, "Follow the variance procedures that are there." But really, we should include these in the flood plane chapter, the flood plane development chapter, to really make sure that we are enforcing some specific preventative measures and addressing specific risks that are related to the flood damage prevention, particularly as it relates to the variance procedure and the appeal procedure. So, in doing that, we reviewed our ordinance, the model ordinance, and a number of other communities that participate in the CRS program, including Asheville, which is also a Level 8 program, to look at what their corrective measures are as well. So, this was a large change. And then, finally, the last goal was really to retain our status as a CRS community, a Level 8 CRS community, and to get additional points if they're appropriate. So, we looked at all the different potential ways that we can do it, and staff identified a few that we were going to, that we're proposing tonight. We don't anticipate that these would elevate the city to a higher rating at this time, but it does improve our score for future review and reflects those higher standards that can reduce and prevent future flood damage, and that's really the purpose of this chapter. And those are specifically to increase the time period used to calculate significant damage and significant improvement, and including a requirement that a non-conversion agreement be recorded when is necessary to ensure that unfinished lower floors are not converted to habitable space. In putting together all of these different text amendments, we did consult with North Carolina Emergency Management, and they helped us go over all of our ordinances, pointed us in the right direction, and all of the comments that we received, especially as they related to NFIP and CRS, have been reflected in the proposed changes for you today. Under North Carolina General Statutes, a local government is authorized to enact and enforce flood plane regulations and a flood damage prevention ordinance in pursuit of public health, safety, and welfare. So, these amendments align with North Carolina General Statutes, as I just said, but it also aligns with many of the different elements of our Building Brevard 2030 Comprehensive Land Use Plan, including requiring conservation design in areas with sensitive natural resources and limiting the scale and footprint of new development in conservation low-density areas within the future land use map. No action is requested at this time. It's for information only and for the public hearing, but at the next regular meeting, we will request that you approve the text amendment as presented, approve the text amendment with modifications that are made by council, or reject the text amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, now, Alan, it's time for your comments. The same rules still apply that I read earlier. Five minutes. You have five minutes.
I'm not even going to take that long. Sorry to ruin your perfect record for nobody speaking. Again, kudos to the planning department, who do a great job in drafting these amendments. I get to work with them in different capacities, and I always look forward to reviewing everything that they prepare. In looking through the proposed amendment, many of them do look to be administrative, but as I read further, I saw some new language which concerned me. It has to do with Section 26, variances. It appears that despite all the guardrails that were established elsewhere in the ordinance, this section is kind of a big exception that lists a broad set of opportunities for allowing variances so that even more development can occur. And then, I got to Paragraph H, Special Facilities, and I was surprised to see that we want to allow items such as solid waste disposal facilities, hazardous waste management facilities, salvage yards, and chemical storage facilities to be built on the flood planes. And it seems like the bar set for these, for the reasons to allow such variances are pretty low. It only needs to serve a critical need for the city, and no feasible locations exist outside the flood zone area. So, my biggest question rhetorically is, you know, why is this being added? It just feels like the city's looking to expand beyond its current constraints instead of living within them. The flood planes are both examples of the beauty of this earth that's been endowed to us by God and are critical to both nature and the ecosystem. Disruption of those areas through attempts to bypass natural constraints like floods, or because they're inconvenient, has effects on our environment and therefore our ultimate quality of life. Please, let's not consume these areas, especially for these least desirable of purposes. So, I'm asking this council to add language which specifically denies any variances for special facilities before this comes up for a vote, and then maybe we can get to Level 9 compliance with that. So, again, thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mercado. Okay, that was our only individual that signed up for the public hearing, so we will close the public hearing. The next item is our Consent and Information Agenda. The first item has been moved to New Business. The items remaining on the consent are property tax releases for October 2023, the Whitmire Street Waterline Project Street Waterline Project closeout, Rosenwald Community Advisory Board Minutes of August 17, 2023, Council Finance, Human Resources, and Citizen Appointment Committee Minutes of August 28, 2023, Council Parks, Trails, and Recreation Committee Minutes September 20 of '23, Downtown Master Plan Committee Minutes September 21 of '23, and Council Public Safety Committee Minutes September 25 of '23. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items?
Should I move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent approved. Moving on to unfinished business. The first item is the proposed expansion of the Downtown Development Overlay District, and our planning director, Mr. Ray, will present this.
Thank you very much. The proposed text amendment is to expand the Downtown Development Overlay District. It would impose a "built-to" line on these properties and the requirement that mixed-use buildings have their non-residential use located on the ground floor with residential on top. The Planning Board heard this at their August meeting and recommended a larger area than what staff proposed, and the recommendation was carried forward to council at a public hearing on October 16, 2023. Following the public hearing, staff became aware of a limitation in the way Planning Board can offer a recommendation to council for zoning map amendments. Section 16.7.D.2 states the only possible recommendations the Planning Board can forward to City Council for zoning map amendments are: Grant the zoning map amendment as requested; Grant the zoning map amendment with a restriction, reduction in the area requested; Grant the zoning map amendment to a more restrictive general zoning district; or deny the application. A recommendation to increase the area is not one of Planning Board's options, so council did not receive a valid recommendation at the public hearing last month. I apologize for this oversight. Staff is requesting that council deny the zoning map amendment and instruct staff to restart the process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ray. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. This is obviously, well, I'll make my motion first. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the original area as recommended by staff for the expansion of the Downtown Development Overlay District.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll open it for discussion. Mr. Baker.
Yeah, I've had several discussions about this, and talked to the city attorney as well about how we should proceed here. And I feel pretty strongly that, you know, the Planning Board, the Planning Board's recommendation of the area for where, for what I made the motion is implied in their motion of an expanded area as well, so I feel like we're on solid ground moving that forward. And I, you know, there are some areas within that expansion that I think are pretty ripe for redevelopment and right on the edge of our downtown area. So I feel a sense of urgency to do this, especially because it does line up with our comprehensive land use plan, and, you know, this particular area seems like a no-brainer. You know, I'd like to have further discussion after we deal with this motion about how we proceed from here. But, you know, I think this area has been publicly announced and noticed. It did go through the Planning Board process, you know, their motion, although, you know, we had an issue with it being larger than what was recommended by staff, also included this area, so I believe we, council can go ahead and move on this and expand the overlay district, as I said.
Mr. Daniel.
I would agree. I think we need to move forward with this as well. I do have some concerns, and actually, I would like to consider sending the Planning Board's recommendation back to them with the caveat that we need to, any corridor roads that are included on this should include both sides of the road. So that would be my recommendation for moving forward.
Mr. Morrow.
Yeah, I think that what we heard from the last public hearing, from Mr. Harris specifically, were some good suggestions on this whole process. He also asked for consideration for additional time, additional comments from stakeholders as well, so.
Ms. Dinkins?
Yeah, I have a whole series of questions for our attorney and for you, Paul. I remember, and I wrote it down, that Aaron said we want it to be more methodical, "methodical" was the word, in how we approached the overlay, and that that was the reasoning for staff's recommendation being smaller than what Planning Board envisioned. I go by the comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan very clearly aligns more closely with what the Planning Board envisioned versus what staff envisioned. So tell me, tell me what is "methodical" about going asymmetrical, going one way but not the other way? I consider Brevard to be looking in terms of portals both ways, so why would we go one way and not the other way?
I mean, I can't speak to what Aaron Blam meant. He wished he could have been here tonight, but he was sick. I think what he meant, though, is that he just wanted to, I mean, it's a matter of timing. He wanted to have the Downtown Overlay District be kind of small and well-thought-out in the beginning, and then maybe expand later as the city grows. So instead of creating a large, large Downtown Overlay District now, I think what he had in mind was just creating more of a tighter Downtown Overlay District in the beginning.
That doesn't seem to go with what the comprehensive plan suggests. In my mind, the overlay does exactly that. It only changes things if development happens, but we can put it in place way before development happens. And in the past, Brevard has had plans like this comprehensive plan, and then we don't follow it, and then it gets shelved because it starts to look a little bit embarrassing. And this one, I believe, is a good plan, and we should stand for it, and we should follow it. So the other question I have procedurally now is if, in fact, our Planning Board can do nothing but approve what staff brings to them, make it smaller, or make it less restricted in zoning?
Right, which means that, that, excuse me, that language comes from the state statute, almost mirrors it, but we can draft our UDO how we want to. Right now, the UDO states that in a zoning map amendment context, it can either be approved, denied, or reduced in size, or reduced in density. And a part of that is the state statute, which forbids pretty explicitly downzoning. That is a part of the reason that it reads the way it does. This would not be a downzone circumstance, but if the council's desire is to modify that and give the Planning Board more authority, that can be done, those modifications can be done to the UDO. But as it reads now, that is, that is the way it is, that it is limited in making recommendations. Planning Board is just a, is just an advisory board, it has no authority to do anything and create policy, that's this board's job. Because we're elected, the board up here is elected, and the Planning Board's not. So, but, that doesn't mean that we can't give them all the authority we want to, and if that's one of the, one of the options, I think that the Planning Department could make that amendment, though I would recommend, I have some concerns about the notice requirement, because people need to be told if their property is being considered.
So I'm glad you're bringing this up. Is there a way we can get the UDO language up? Because if we're going there, I would like to see the language. You said that the Planning Board is advisory, and I agree that that is its function. However, how can a board be advisory if it only gets to green light what staff has selected? If we go by the procedural language in the UDO, in effect, they denied the staff's proposal. Not that Planning Board has ever denied anything back to staff, but if staff and the Planning Board can agree, then ultimately, it comes to us and we decide what it will be, and not to sound impervious, but we can, we can go bigger than what staff tells us.
I believe you run into great troubles with notice, because you, under the state law, you really, you have to give firm notice to anyone who could be affected by that. I mean, we could not, for instance, tonight, a motion could not be made to expand the Downtown Overlay District to include anything between, I don't know, Silvermont and City Hall without there being appropriate proper notice given to all the landowners who are going to be affected, and everybody on the perimeter of that. And so when the Planning Board, when there's a, when the Planning Department notices the Planning Board's meeting and makes the application, there are notice requirements, and they're in the, in the UDO. The issue here is that it's, it's very clear as to what, as to what the Planning Board is allowed to do in the context of a map amendment, and that's different from a text amendment. In a text amendment, their recommendation can be much broader, because it's going to be something that affects an entire, the entire UDO. Because this map amendment only affects certain properties, it's been cut down and it's a little bit more restricted. Now, like I said, that's because that's what this says right now. I, if, if the council wanted to, I would think it would be fairly straightforward for the Planning Department to modify the language of this, to allow an increase in size to comport with the, with the City of Brevard Comprehensive Land Use Plan. But my recommendation in assisting them to draft it would be some enhanced notice procedures. So something along the lines of, and I am just spitballing here, but something along the lines of if the Planning Board increases the size, that, that would require then a new notice to all the surrounding landowners for another Planning Board hearing, and if they maintain that, then it comes up for a, for a hearing in front of council, something along those lines. Just because, because notice of what is going to be happening, changing zoning of land, is very important to make sure everybody is clear what's happening. And that's, I think that came out just at the public hearing, too, a lot of concern about that.
I agree that this is very important, but when I look at the language, this is non-functional language. The Advisory Board cannot grant. There's no granting, it can only suggest.
It's a following recommendation.
Following recommendations, grant.
Make one following recommendation.
Grant.
Grant is requested. Grant with a reduction of the area. Your issue is with the grant.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna mince words here, and I'm gonna stop, but in essence, if we go by the, by the word of this segment here, then the Planning Board denied this application back to staff because it disagreed with staff's recommendation. So it coming to council...
It's always a recommendation. That's all the Planning Board can do. And they're recommending that the council grant.
My issue, my issue goes back to, so staff drives the bus when it picks an overlay, the circumference of an overlay. The Planning Board, which should be our first stop to suss out such staff recommendations, gets to do very little other than make it smaller. So council, we can do what we want to do with it, correct? In terms of it being noticed, and then we do with it what we want to do with it?
I have, I, that is not exactly correct, because my concern would be if someone objected to the implementation of the Downtown Overlay District on their property, and it was done not in compliance with the UDO, that could potentially open us up to liability.
Okay.
And like I say, the UDO can be modified, that can be changed.
It needs to be.
They can approve the zoning map amendment, or they can reduce the scope of the area, they can expand it, because those property owners weren't noticed, properly noted, is why.
Okay, so, so we're going back to staff tells us what we're going to consider for the overlay, for lack of a better, that's where it starts, correct?
Correct.
But I'm, I'm not understanding the rationale behind how it was picked, because the comprehensive land use plan, this is basically one half of it, and not the other half of downtown. And I'm sorry to dig in here, but I feel like something went very wrong, and if we want to, you know, do this, it needs to be changed, and we have had applications before us where this was not an issue, where Planning Board went larger and we considered it. So...
And that was a mistake.
So this section needs to be brought to us in an expedient manner.
If you're talking about, we started that process over again, because it took so long to actually, to do it.
Okay.
We actually began the process.
So there was the notice, and it went back down there?
That's correct.
And so it, by going back through that?
The staff recommended.
So if, one more question, and then, and then I'll be done, and I apologize for hogging the time here, but if, when it comes to zoning, we try to be as fair and equal as we can be, correct? That is, that is the aim of it. So my question would be, how do we justify going one way with an overlay and not the other way, in terms of property owners looking at this? Why is the timing something that matters? If it doesn't matter, why don't we go both ways at this time? Am I asking, I may not do a good job.
I understand what you're asking, and I, and I understand it, it's a good question. I believe it has more to do with what the most more imminent possible locations for that type of development are, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it is much more likely for there to be development going down Jailhouse Hill than going the other direction that would need to comply with, with that. And that is, and that is, I'm just, you asked a question, I'm trying to answer it, and I'm really kind of speaking for Aaron, I think, a little bit, but I think that was probably the justification, because the comprehensive land use plan, while it is appropriate to make it a land use plan, it's also a plan for going into the future 20 and 30 years, not a plan for the next two weeks.
In essence, you've just said that we're targeting, that we're just, we're looking at what is most ripe, and I think that what we're doing is we're giving notice to the other side of downtown that they better redevelop if they like their parking lots.
I, I can't say yes or no to that. I don't, I don't, I don't know, I'm not sure that that was...
Mac said it well, that the comprehensive land use plan looks 20 to 30 years in the future a lot of times, and so, I mean, we don't rezone everything all at once, we just do it gradually on what is more likely to be redeveloped in the shorter time, and that's why we picked a smaller area.
So who has the crystal ball?
You do, as a member of council. You do, as a member of council, I suppose. That would be the only answer I could give to that question. It, it, it is a educated guess by planning professionals.
Thanks for all the time. Um, are you finished, Mr. Dinkins?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
I, I agree with Mr. Daniel. His statements are more aligned with mine.
Okay, we, was there another comment?
Yeah, could I make one more comment? Just that, because I didn't know we were going to get into the, the procedure part. But I do think we should consider, after we vote on this motion, I think we should consider providing staff with further direction about how we'd like the, the planning procedure to be undertaken in the future. Because I do think, it, it seems to me, we, we have to solve for this issue in the, in the process, so that when it happens next, next time, we actually have an option. Because I'm not sure that, as it's currently written, that what's on the screen there really gives, if planning board were to want to recommend an expanded area, I'm not sure we have a process for how they should do that, or where we should proceed from there. So I think, I think we need to cover that after we deal with the motion that's currently been made.
Okay. Any other additional comments before we vote? All right, we have a motion on the table. I want to make sure we're all clear on the motion. The motion was to approve the original overlay district as recommended by staff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so we have a four one. Do we have another motion, Mr. Baker, that you want to make regarding?
I'm trying to think of how to word it. But, oh, I think I'd make a motion to direct staff to draft some language to whatever section of the UDO we're currently looking at.
Sixteen point seven.
Section two A. Did I get that?
Yeah.
To clarify how the planning board would recommend, the procedure for how the planning board would recommend an expansion of a staff recommended zoning change.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any additional discussion, Mr. Daniel?
Yeah, I understand the intent, but I also realize that, I understand what Mr. McCullough is saying, that I, it has to have a, some sort of hearing if we, if they change it. I would like to, if the planning board has a better idea than what we've presented, or what has been presented to them, I would like to hear that. That would be seen as like within their purview. But with the understanding that it's, you know, it'll slow things down, we'll have to go back and start over, so, which is, you know, as long as that's understood, that's probably okay.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I agree. I think a hearing would be necessary. I don't, I don't think it would be fair for citizens to have their property included without an opportunity to first research and voice their opinion to it.
Just to be clear, though, it wouldn't be a hearing at the planning board level, but it would be notification to every one of the affected property owners.
Correct.
Inviting them to attend the planning board meeting.
Okay.
Right? And then, of course, they would get a letter inviting them to attend the public hearing as well, in front of city council.
Yeah.
Ms. Dinkins?
I have no comment.
Mr. Morrow?
Yeah, because what I heard the planning director ask us tonight was to, to send it back and sort of start over and get it right again. So what we need to do at this point is to do that, I think.
Can I make another comment? Or less?
Yes. Mr. Baker, do you have any more comments?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's, well, the intent of my original motion was, you know, to, yeah, I think it's clear from what the planning board recommended, that they agreed with staff's original recommendation, and they had further ideas. And so we, we dealt with the, the part where they agreed with staff's recommendation. I think the "and we have other ideas" part is, we don't really even have a process for that now. I think they would maybe provide staff with some, you know, casual conversational feedback, and maybe staff would, would, you know, hear that and bring them something down the line. But I'd rather have a, a set process for that in, in the UDO as, as we're looking at it.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify that I agree, that it seems like they basically agreed. But I agree with Mr. Morrow that, you know, we've approved the staff's plan, but I think this needs to go back to the planning board with the understanding that, you know, what we've been discussing here for the last bit necessitates that it comes back to them with the consideration of, you know, getting it on both sides of the street and all the things that we've talked about. And I'm not sure if that even needs a motion, or whether that needs to be consensus.
Mr. Daniel, I'd request that the board go ahead and approve the second motion, directing staff to amend the code, giving planning board more authority to expand. And that just be a general direction, and that apply to all cases. And then come back and give your thoughts on this, the merits of this particular case.
Are you suggesting that we take a motion?
We have a motion on the table.
A third motion.
No, I don't think that'll take a third motion.
Oh.
But I just think we need to dispose of the second one.
Yeah.
And then hear comments from the board after that.
All right. We done commenting on the second motion? All right? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the second motion passes. Okay. Additional comments on directing planning board to relook at the overlay district? Any additional comments, Mr. Jones?
I have none.
Mr. Morrow?
As I mentioned, I thought that some of the comments that Mr. Harris made were right on target, so.
Ms. Dinkins?
Yes, I, I, I think this is the place where I would strongly suggest that staff look at, at the comprehensive land use plan and follow it 20, 30 years out. The overlay will not do anything until people develop. And I'm not sure if I trust the crystal ball that somebody seems to have, that I don't know about. So I would very much like for this to return in a more expanded version.
Mr. Daniel?
My comments stand that I made earlier, so.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would certainly recommend that, personally, that planning board look at the expansion of the downtown overlay district further, with the comprehensive land use plan in mind. And I'll, I'll echo what I said at the last meeting, which is that, you know, we, we have development, redevelopment going on right now in the city that you can go and visit, which, you know, I think shows the importance of expanding the overlay district in order to meet the goals that we've all set up here, so.
Question for the board, which do you want to see first? Do you want to see the amendments to the code, expanding the planning board's charge first? Or do you want to hear, do you want to see the discussion of the expansion of the zone first?
Second, the second option.
What's the timeframe?
I don't know. What do you think?
Probably, are we meeting in December?
As you say, when does the planning board meet?
We have two meetings scheduled in December at the moment.
Okay, we can probably have it done by December, then.
The expansion of the zone?
I don't know, maybe January?
But noticing?
Yeah, one of the two, probably.
I, I would say give us till January.
Yeah.
Please, just to make sure we.
We want to do a neighborhood compatibility meeting and stuff. So if we tried to rush it, then we'd be skipping some of those things that are important.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Manager, do you have sufficient direction?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, moving on to our next order of business. Proposed amendment to the UDO chapters two, three, five, eight, nine, 10, and 19 parking standards. And this is Emily Brewer.
Yes, I am back before you to get today to talk about parking regulations. The text amendment before you is for parking regulations for private development. It doesn't amend any ongoing city projects, or affect any public parking areas or anything like that. It's really just regulations as it relates to new development and development, redevelopment in our jurisdiction. So parking regulations in the UDO are meant to ensure the provision of off-street parking is proportionate to the land use by establishing minimum and/or maximum amounts of parking that is required. These regulations can also be used to incentivize and encourage development that prioritizes multimodal transit options and other adopted goals from the comprehensive plan. This is a staff-initiated text amendment that really consolidates and refines all of our parking standards. We had a number of different priorities in mind. The first is right sizing the parking requirements by both land use and development context, incorporating safe and efficient parking area design, incentivizing and encouraging development that prioritizes those multimodal transit options and other best practices in urban design and development, adding parking lot maintenance requirements, and managing the potential negative impacts of both too little and too much parking. We've worked with planning board over the past couple months, starting in May, about all of these. We had a number of different work sessions, and they ultimately recommended in favor unanimously at their August 22nd meeting. I gave a full presentation at the last meeting, and I have it pulled up, so I can reference that as well. But in summation, we are really consolidating all of the parking standards and reorganizing the parking chapter, which is chapter 10, implementing a tiered parking model for a minimum and maximum number of parking spaces that vary by zoning district, adding in some exceptions to that tiered parking matrix that allow us to, allow developers to either reduce their minimum parking requirement, or increase their maximum parking requirement in exchange for other things, like investing in alternative modes of transportation, you better utilizing land, and accounting for various site constraints. And then we also added some regulations and amended the regulations for other types of off-street parking, like loading spaces, bicycle racks, and electric vehicle parking spaces. And then lastly, we revisited and revamped, excuse me, the parking area design and construction standards to better reflect best practices in urban design. This is directly, this is explicitly called out as an action in our comprehensive land use plan, action ATCH9, right-size parking requirements and develop incentives for multimodal access and alternative approaches to meet parking demand. But this is really a complex issue that affects virtually every aspect of cities' function. And so as such, it, it reflects a lot of different goals that are in the plan. Probably first and foremost would be encouraging a development pattern that respects Brevard's sense of place and prioritizes livable communities, as well as goal number four, create and build environment that prioritizes safe, active, and multimodal transportation system and community health and wellness. This is for action tonight, so we request that you take one of the following actions. First, adopt the proposed amendments as written. Second, revise and adopt the amendments. Third, reject the amendments. Or four, table it for further consideration and discussion. And planning board has also submitted a statement of consistency and reasonableness that, with regards to the city's existing policies and plans for your review.
Okay, do I have a motion concerning staff's request?
So moved, adopt the proposed amendments as written.
I'll second that. All right, we'll open it for discussion, Mr. Morrow?
It, it seems to pull it all in together, so it's a good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dinkins?
I have no comments. I think this is as good as it is.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, it's well organized that way.
Thank you. Mr. Daniel?
Yeah, I have a question. So on page 211 of our packet, which is page 42 of this document, number seven, I think that might be E7, oops, sorry. You forgot.
The item.
Turn our phones off.
Are you referring to the item upgrading pre-existing non-conforming parking facilities?
I am. And my question is, this is new, is that correct?
Um.
New wordage? Has this been in the?
Somewhat. It was kind of, sort of, in the non-conforming chapter. We are refining it and incorporating it with the entire parking standards. But it is currently in the UDO that there is some flexibility if you are converting an existing parking lot, meeting additional standards for landscaping and other design requirements if the parking lot, as it currently stands, does not meet those.
So the intent is not for the enforcement to say that this parking lot is non-conforming, you have to bring it up to standard?
Correct. It's saying that if you have a parking lot, then you're making a redevelopment, you have to redo the parking lot. In order to make sure you meet the other requirements, we can reduce the amount of parking that's required. So in order for you to build, to have additional trees, or to have additional buffer, or to have walkways between the parking spaces and the entrance to the building, we are allowing for some flexibility in the requirements of the number of parking spaces in exchange for those improvements that would be required.
I see. I, I just saw that. I didn't see that it was an exception, so, okay. No, good job. Thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I'll start with a question. I just wondered if, if y'all did an exercise where you maybe looked at previous developments, particularly ones that maybe had a ridiculous amount?
Yes.
Well, sorry, I'm editorial, editorializing.
Yes.
A ridiculous amount of parking, like Ingalls, and, like, looked at what, how that would have maybe changed with these rules?
Yes, we did. I can't speak, I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but that is part of why the maximums are going to be so important.
Okay.
Is that a lot of those uses that are more likely to overpark and provide additional parking spaces that are unnecessary are typically those that are in more mixed-use districts.
Right.
And so that's part of why we implemented the, the Ingalls in question, is in neighborhood mixed-use.
Right.
Which would have both minimums and maximums. And then the, a lot of our other grocery stores and similar kind of shopping centers are all in that upper level, the tier three, which is corridor mixed-use.
Okay.
So that's part of the intent. But we did, we looked very comprehensively at all of the developments that we have reviewed in recent years, especially the bigger ones, to see what kind of parking requirements they had. We also discussed kind of where we thought there were, was too much parking versus what the developer requested, or what the developer built. And then we kind of looked into a lot of the different smaller uses in the area to see exactly what kinds of, of parking requirements were needed. I think, especially as it relates to those smaller uses, and not the big grocery stores, the importance of shared parking agreements and utilizing existing parking spaces became much more apparent for us. And so that became something that we were really focused on as well. But the fact that we are having maximums is really directly tied to some of those larger anchor uses that, that end up overparking. that end up overparking when we don't necessarily need those.
Right. Yeah, I think, I just personally, and I'm probably nerding out on parking too much, but I personally love when y'all put like those visual aids for us, like in the discussion of the changes. Like I'm thinking of the steep slope presentation where, and, yeah. Like, and I know that, like seeing the Ingalls parking lot as it currently is, I'm probably singling Ingalls out too much. Okay, Walgreens. Seeing the Walgreens parking lot as it currently is, and, you know, the requirements at the time, and then how these, these changes would create a minimum and then potentially a maximum, and visually seeing that on there, I think would have been nice to see. But, but otherwise, you know, it's great, great work. I do have a follow-up question to what Gary was saying. So if, if some of these larger parking lots would seem to be overparked, if they, do these changes open them up for redevelopment potentially? And if so, how does that relate to that particular question that Gary asked?
Yes, it certainly does. There's plenty of space, especially in some of these larger parking lots, that don't require that parking. I don't want to speak specifically.
Right.
As it relates to certain projects, or if there'd be enough space, or those kind of things. But when we look at a development, we will look at all of the parking that's required for that use and any other uses that might be shared. So I think we would lean heavily on some of these other things in this section, like shared and combined parking spaces to adjust the minimum requirements, additional bicycle parking, adding some of these additional things to allow for a more appropriate amount of parking, whether that be more or less. And I think that the whole purpose of this is really to provide more flexibility where it's necessary and incentivize those better practices as it relates to parking and parking facility design. And so I think there's certainly opportunities with some of these larger parking lots to redevelop and create out parcels that can maybe share the parking requirement and create a more lively district with multiple uses instead. So I hope that this will spur some of that activity as well.
Yeah, great. Well, thank you guys for looking at this. It's obviously hugely important. And I'll just end with a couple of comments that, you know, as a community, I think we've sort of had this interesting, ongoing conversation about parking over the last maybe six months to a year. And, you know, I think we should hopefully all realize, at this point, I think there's been a perception out there that parking is just like a universal good, that, you know, you get in your magic people mover machine, and you go to a store, and you have this place for you to park, and then you're so close, and you can just walk right in. But there are costs to parking as well, and it's not just the cost of building parking, it's the ongoing cost of having that land tied up with, you know, potential stormwater issues. It's land that can't be used for other things, like housing, or, you know, stores. And so I, you know, I know we all have different ideas about, about parking, and certainly downtown, we've had an ongoing discussion about it. But I hope we can all agree that, you know, it's not just a universal good, and it's also not a universal bad. People need to be able to get to places and park. And so, you know, too often, we try to wedge these things into white and black, and good or bad. But we need to kind of see, see the good and the bad in it, and there are certainly costs to parking. So I think this, this amendment certainly takes that into account, so thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, our next item of unfinished business is the proposed amendment to the city of Brevard traffic schedule. And Mr. Ray will present this.
Thank you very much. So staff noticed several inaccuracies in the traffic schedule establishing speed limits for streets within the city, so we initiated a text amendment to clean up these discrepancies for better usability. Only new addition is establishing a speed limit and no parking on Maple Grove Lane, which was recently constructed and dedicated to the city as part of the Acousta View Commons project. Speed limit is proposed at fifteen miles per hour, with no parking on the shoulders, and a stop sign before entering onto Asheville Highway. Council held a public hearing on these amendments at their October sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting. Nobody spoke at the public hearing. Council's options are to adopt the amendment as presented, adopt the amendments as modified by council, reject the amendments, or remand the amendments back to staff and the committee for further consideration.
Do I have a motion regarding this?
So move, move we adopt a amendment as presented?
I'll second.
Comments, Mr. Morrow?
Like again, cleaning it up. I like those words.
Ms. Dinkins?
Yes, good catches, and I'm glad we're cleaning this up.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I'm glad to see some areas on here that needed addressing.
Mr. Baker?
I have no comments.
Mr. Daniel?
I have no comments. I haven't.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Amendment passes. Okay, moving on to new business, we have one item that was moved from the consent agenda, and that was replacing the double bollards with single bollards along the multi-use path in Railroad District. Ms. Dinkins, you asked to have this moved?
I did.
Would you like to open?
Yes, please. Thank you, Your Honor. Let me see, I'm going to make sure I'm on the right page here. Here are the bollards. That's right. So first of all, and I think I've said this before, I don't like to see things that cost money in the consent agenda unless they've been budgeted or unless they are really nominal, and we can argue over nominal, but the quick dirty math is that this is twelve thousand dollars, which I feel like needs to be noticed on the record and not be in the consent agenda. And then it's more observation than, than questions. But we tend to do this thing where, when a mistake gets multiplied, that we'll, we'll say it, this was planned a long time ago. I've noticed that before, where there's suddenly, this was in the plans that was approved in two thousand and eighteen. And I, I went back and looked, I cannot see any expansion of the multi-use plan that we've approved where the bollards are specifically addressed. And when I go look at what I consider bollards, there's an evolution when you come out of the forest. We have those metal ones that you can bend, that can be laid down, and there's one, and then suddenly we have two. And the worst part for me is that we put up doubles in front of Keer, and then those got corrected immediately because people had trouble with them, especially turning, where you have to turn on the other side by rainbow. And I think we've had some complaints. But then we went on with the bike path, and we did the same thing again. And I would just really like to make sure, as we're talking about branding our bike path, that, that we institute consistency with these kinds of features, that they look all the same, and that we approve them and vet them through different user groups. And it's not just people on bikes, it's people in wheelchairs, it's people with double strollers or triple strollers, I think exist now, people on handicap bicycles and so on, that we really make sure these things don't look like jail, that they don't look like there's more bars than space to squeeze through. And just as an illustration, my sixteen-year-old son has some balancing issues, and stopping between those two yellow bollards and looking for traffic, that just overloads his senses and doesn't serve the purpose. I understand that we're trying to keep motorists from turning into our multi-use paths, but I think that can be accomplished with the smaller ones in the middle. And I did read in the memo that those would not stop a car, but I'm pretty sure they would tear up a car quite a bit before the car would keep going. So that would serve the purpose there. And all this to say that this, I wonder why this needs to come out of the Public Works budget? Is that the budget where the mistake was made?
There was a project budget for this.
So where was the mistake made? Because these continued on. These were, after, after the Keer corner, in my mind, double bollards should not have been a thing anymore, because that's, that was very clearly, I mean, that's where the photos come from with the patch. And I'm not putting you on the spot, Wilson, but, but that, that was where we learned that double bollards are not a good thing, and the next thing I know, there's bigger, better bollards that are double, not too far off. So where was the mistake made? I don't think it was Public Works. Public Works does what they are being instructed to do. They don't design bollards.
And this was constructed by a contractor.
Okay.
So, yeah, they're off, they're off the hook. I can't tell you where the mistake was made, but I can tell you that the board has remedied it because you now review all plans.
Okay.
And I actually think that's a pretty good practice, and I recommend you continue with that. In this case, I can't identify where the double bollards were, you know, approved. I think it was by the previous manager after you all endowed him with the ability to approve the plans, but I can't show that, and your comments seem to dispute that, so I don't know. But I kind of understand why. And the reason why I think it was legitimate, at least in an engineer's eyes or someone drawing up plans, is because over in that area, you've got trucks coming out of T V S and the industrial properties there. You've got the Comporium Internet trucks going in and out every day, the Henderson Oil trucks going in and out every day. And so the type of traffic that exists in that space might suggest that you want some additional protections. But we've seen that that hasn't been necessary, and as a matter of fact, the double bollards have been more heartache than they have been protection. They're irregularly spaced. Some of them have this much space between them, some of them have this much space between them, and you can't tell until you're inches from it tumbling over your handlebars. And so we've had a couple bona fide incidents, and those were brought to the Chair of the Public Safety Committee. He asked that we put this on the agenda and consider what it would take to replace the double bollards with single. And so we put together an analysis, the contents of which you can see in your staff report there. And I'd just like to point out, Councilmember, that most of that cost is staff hours. The actual cash that we'll have to spend on materials constitutes about a third of that twelve thousand dollars. And the rest is, no, excuse me, I take that back, about half and half. But under ten thousand dollars in cash outlay, which I felt was pretty nominal. And then also, this will be a question, I guess, for the new board, but I think that for efficiency's sake, matters that are recommended by a policy board will move through the process quicker if they're put on consent. And of course, full council will have the opportunity to pull them, like you have, to talk about more thoroughly. But by and large, they're going to be matters that, you know, are pretty routine like this, and I think we can move more quickly through them if they're on consent. But I'll ask that question of the new board here in the months to come, if that's something that they agree or disagree with. But that was my logic for putting it on consent, since it had the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee.
Okay, do I have a motion regarding bollards?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion, Mr. Morrow? Ms. Dinkins?
No.
Mr. Jones?
No comment.
Mr. Daniel?
I have a question. The, my question is, are bollards, are they the current recommended barrier for pedestrian bike paths?
You got some thoughts on that?
Does he ride a bike?
Which is background. Does he have a bike in?
That was a former city manager project, and planning department was only involved in right-of-way acquisition.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not asking about what was done in the past. I'm asking.
So I, I can tell you that, I can't remember the group, but I think it was Ashtoe?
Alta?
No, not Alta. Alta was our engineer, but there's a cycling group out there, a nationwide group, that suggests standards for bike paths and so forth. And their new, most newly released standards do suggest single bollards where bollards are required, and fewer bollards overall.
Yeah.
So the movement is going away from bollards.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Baker?
Yeah, I mean, look, I obviously have thoughts about this. Sorry. First, I'm glad we're fixing the problem. I must admit that when this was, especially the railroad avenue section, when that was completed, I was so excited that the thing was done, that when people complained about the bollards, I was like, yeah, but we've been waiting three years for this, and now it's here. And that was a me problem. Because I, you know, then when I started writing this section, I was, it became very obvious that the bollards were a problem. And I think, you know, I hate, I hate to look backwards, but we kind of have to, because that's how we got here. And I, and I understand how an engineer may have engineered it this way, but that was clearly not an engineer that knew anything about a multi-use path or a bike path. It was an engineer that was, you know, used to doing other things. And I think we're in a better place now, where we would talk to the right people. But I also want to say, just to rehash something that, you know, I campaigned on when I got elected, was that some of this, I think, was due to the fact that we had wasted so much time not working on the path, and there was so much pressure building up to get it done, that we started rushing through things. And we, we, clearly, things were skipped, and we made mistakes because of that. And it seems like a contradiction, because I was so glad we were rushing to get it done, but I was only glad because we had waited so long to get anything done. And again, this is an argument for like, let's make continual progress, and let's follow through on the things that we say we're going to do. And we'll be more likely to do them the right way the first time if we do that. And it won't be like this rush to get it done, and we'll, we won't be skipping any steps. And I do think this is another flag in the ground for the consistency of the path. You know, and, you know, we talked about all the different kinds of bollards that are on there now. Like, I think it is important with the Acusta Trail coming, that, that our city trail does look consistent and looks professional. And, you know, I've said before, there's some sections in the part of the path that is completed that I think we need to revisit to make sure it looks consistent. And some of that, this is a short tangent, I promise, but some of that includes the, the path itself, like the material that we're making the path out of. I know the, the section in front of the high school was sort of a different material. But that visual cue, I think, matters, that, you know, it's a blacktop, you know, it's the same path the whole way through. And so if we redo that section in front of the gas station on Deer Lake Road, I want it to be the same path. I don't want it to look like a sidewalk. I want it to look like the path. And so, yeah, I believe that we're in a better place. I think we have, we have different staff in a lot of different areas that probably had their hand on this. had their hand on this project. And I hope we just continue on the, on the way we've been going, because I don't, I don't think we would make the same mistake today.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, that was the end of new business. We are on remarks and future agenda considerations. And we'll start with Mr. Morrow.
I have nothing.
Ms. Dinkins?
I have nothing.
Mr. Jones?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Daniel?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Baker?
Oh, man, gotta be the bad guy.
You just get to speak for all of us.
Just one quick thing, and it's mostly for Mac, City Attorney Mac. Regarding the public hearing procedure that we've been doing, where we hear it once and then vote on it at the second meeting, I, I agree that that is the correct procedure. I'm wondering if, if there's a way that council can have comments or have an opportunity to ask questions when it is first read without a motion? I know that that can be tricky, but is there a way that we can legally do that?
I, I, I'll look into it. I do believe that you are allowed to do your, the council's procedures are what the council's adopts as their procedures.
Okay.
And that, that, I can't see where that would, just off the top of my head, can't see where that would be contrary to any sort of, to anything. It might even actually clarify things a little bit, but I'll, and as I recall, that may have been done for quite a while-
Okay.
-before we kind of moved, before the council moved to the, hey, we want to not vote till the next meeting.
Yeah.
So, I think, I can't foresee any reason why not, but I'll look at it and make sure that when the new council adopts their procedure, that something is considered.
Okay. I'd like, I'd like to have that option. I think it can be a little awkward for the public to speak, and then we just kind of sit here quietly and don't respond. I also think, sometimes I have questions about the presentation that I'd like to ask to staff ahead of when we've waited two more weeks before voting on it, that I'd like to ask, so, I'd like to see if we can maybe-
I'll look through our procedure manual and see if I can tweak it and come back to y'all with something for that.
Okay. And that's it?
Okay, Mr. Attorney?
I will just remind you, we have a personnel's closed session following this meeting.
Our deputy city clerk, any comments?
No comments.
Mr. Manager?
Let's have a few, I'm afraid. This week, I started reading Article Four, Chapter Seventy of our Code of Ordinances. Pop quiz, does anyone know what Article Four, Code Seventy of our, of our Code of Ordinance is? All right, it is the Water Shortage Response Plan.
Ooh.
And I mention this to you because, depending on how the weather goes over the next few weeks, we may have to implement that. And so, unless it rains, at our next meeting, I'm gonna bring you a full briefing on the steps that we'd take in response to a water shortage, and bring you a full briefing on that. I've asked Dennis here today to talk a little bit about the triggers for the various stages of conservation that that ordinance contains, and he's got his nice shirt on, so he's ready to speak. But before, but before he does, I want to say that we're already one of fourteen Western North Carolina counties that are listed as in a severe drought by the North Carolina Drought Management Advisory Council. Fortunately, we're close enough to the source of our raw water that we're usually one of the last to feel the impacts of the drought, and Dennis will sort of talk a little bit more about that shortly. But many of our neighbors, including Hendersonville, have already started implementing their conservation measures, and as I alluded to earlier, depending on how the weather goes, we might have to soon. And so, I'm mentioning this to you today as sort of a soft introduction, so that you won't be shocked in two weeks when I bring you this full briefing. I also mention it as a way to ask all our folks in attendance and all our viewers to start being thoughtful about your water use. If you make elective changes, if we all collectively make elective changes here in the weeks to come, we might be able to delay compulsory measures. So, please be thoughtful about your water use in the weeks to come. On a separate but related note, Adam Mayer, and Bobby's here, if you got any additional questions about this, the U.S. Forest Service and the Transylvania County Fire Marshal have both issued burn bans. The dry conditions in the area, due to lack of rain, have significantly increased the risk of forest fires. As you know, there's already two burning in Western North Carolina, one in Henderson County near Edneyville, and another in Jackson County, right, Bobby? Swain County, excuse me. So, so, not us fortunately, but close by. The Fire Marshal for the county is the primary enforcer of this ban, but the Brevard Fire Department will be assisting with enforcement, and violations are subject to civil penalties. So, don't have a campfire in your backyard here over the next few weeks. And then finally, I'll just conclude my remarks by saying that when it does rain, the conditions are ripe for flooding. Dry ground cannot absorb water as efficiently, and instead runs it off into our storm system, which at this time of year has leaves and other debris in it, and so it might not be able to operate as efficiently as it normally could, which means a high risk of flooding. So, I ask everybody in attendance and watching to, when you see standing water, be water-wise and drive around, and just practice good judgment when you're around standing water next time it rains. And that's all I got to say.
Okay, I just have a few comments. Oh, Dennis, Dennis is gonna speak.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Alex.
Yes, Dennis.
Wonderful.
Dennis, please tell us about the triggers for the conservation.
Right now, we're okay. We're treating water at two-point-six million gallon flow rate, which is about one thousand eight-hundred-and-six gallons per minute. Our number-one trigger is if the creek gets to where we cannot treat at least seventeen-hundred gallons per minute, that's when our ordinance tells us we should go to voluntary conservation. We'd ask people to try to cut back the best they could, and then there, it goes to fifteen-hundred gallons, and then thirteen-hundred gallons. We get down to asking people to, or if we're only taking water in at thirteen-hundred gallons a minute, that wouldn't be real good. I mean, we can still produce all the water we need, but we're gonna be running around the clock. For right now, there's still plenty of water going down the creek. Once it passes the plant, we're taking what we need, and there's still water going. But if it doesn't rain another few weeks, I don't know. I don't have that crystal ball that you all have talked about when it comes to the creek. But I have lived here for a long time, and what's probably gonna happen is this is gonna be dry for a few more weeks. And when it does rain, we're gonna wonder if it's ever going to stop. And this problem could correct itself majorly in just a few days. But, I'm not really fretting about it too bad yet, and nobody from the state has contacted me about the condition of the creek or worried about the creek below the plant yet, but a little rain could, would go a long way, and I would appreciate it, Lord, if you would send phone. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you. I have a question for Dennis. Dennis, or Manager, maybe you can answer this. Do we have the interconnect in place with Rosman yet?
No, ma'am. It is, that project has not even really started yet.
Okay.
The county is actually funding that with some ARPA dollars that they received a few years ago, and they are, I think, in the stage where it's being designed. And so, it's with an engineering firm who's designing that interconnection right now.
Okay. All right, thank you. Just a couple of closing remarks. One, I want to thank staff for being so proactive. I know we have been watching the water levels for the last few weeks, looking at what other cities have done in the region, and so I just want to thank everybody for, you know, the heads up and, and the fact that we have a plan that we can execute if we have to. So, great job. I also want to say that I'm very impressed with a lot of the safety improvements that we've just been making recently. The elimination of the bollards, the double bollards that, you know, have caused various injuries, that we've got a new, a three-way stop at French Broad and Park Avenue, that if you head down by the Methodist Church and the college, you'll see additional safety improvements that make that crosswalk so much safer for people. So, a lot of this is all feedback from the public, and I hope the public realizes that when you come and when you speak to us and you make these comments, we really are listening. And we put it into our process, we analyze it, and we come up with the best solutions overall. And I'm happy to say, we are now on a, quite a number of these at the solution point. And so, anything that we can do that makes our town safer is a great step forward. I do want to also mention, we talked a lot about trails today, that we had a really large milestone in that we joined with Henderson County for the opening of the Acusta Trail. We had the groundbreaking ceremony, and I do want to, I brought my show and tell. We got the Gold Railway Spike here that they passed out, but the Acusta Trail is real, it's starting, they're actually starting construction, and next year, when we hold our groundbreaking ceremony on our side, we're gonna come up with an even better gift to give people than, than these, Mr. Manager. So, start thinking about it. But it was a great ceremony, a couple hundred people were out there, and we joined our brothers and sisters across the county line in a project that's gonna be something for the entire region, so that was exciting. We also, I want to thank everybody, we had a very safe Halloween. Big thank you to the fire department. I understand we had no incidents, and we had, oh, my God, thousands of children out on the streets that night, enjoying themselves, and it all went very, very smoothly. We also had a wonderful Halloween fest, a big thank you to our heart of Brevard partner. That is an incredible amount of work, when you realize that little organization has only three people that work for it. And they pull off this, I think we probably had ten thousand people out on the street that day. It was huge. And again, it happened flawlessly, no incidents, everything went very, very well. I do want to remind people that tomorrow is Election Day, so if you have not voted yet, and I understand early voting has gone extremely well with about twelve hundred people who've already voted during early voting, but, you know, if you haven't voted, you've got all day tomorrow, so please do vote. Who you elect for your city council in your local government has a really big impact on your day-to-day life, and so please have your voice heard by using your vote. We will, of course, be welcoming our new city council members on December fourth, so, but tomorrow is your day to make your voice heard. And finally, we've got the Marine Corps Birthday coming up on Friday. A big happy birthday to my Marine Corps brothers and sisters on their two-hundred-and-forty-eighth birthday. There'll be a Marine Corps Birthday Celebration at Acusta Brewery, where Marines, veterans, and all friends of the Marine Corps are invited. So, I hope to see many of you there. And of course, we have Veterans Day on Saturday. The ceremony will be at eleven o'clock on Saturday morning in front of the courthouse, and I do encourage everybody on that day in particular to please acknowledge, talk to the veterans, and just thank the veterans for the sacrifice that they and their families have made to our country and our freedom. And with that, I believe we need to go into a closed session.
Yes, ma'am, for personnel.
For personnel. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would ask that we please clear the room, and Mr. Deputy-